It is four o'clock, so I'll go ahead and call today's meeting of the Board of Trustees to order. And Student Trustee Nater, if you would please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. No worries. All right, we'll move on to public comment. So pursuant to Board Policy 2350, any person may speak to the Board, either on an agenda item or on other matters of interest to the public that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board, and before any Board action is taken. Comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker and twenty minutes on the same or substantially similar topic unless a majority of the Board votes to extend the time limit. As a matter of policy, members of the Board may not discuss or respond to matters raised during public comment unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion or action in open session. Any questions, please, access, or about access, or if you require accommodation to participate in the meeting, contact the Chancellor's office and as far in advance of the Board meeting as possible. And do we have any public comment?
Yes, sir, we do. We have five that are here and two that were submitted online. If you don't mind, if we can start with those that were submitted online?
Sure.
Thank you. First one submitted by Paulino de la Cruz. Dear Members of the Board of Trustees, I hope this message finds you well. Although I am unable to attend today's Board of Trustees meeting in person, I would like to take this opportunity to express my support for Dr. Alex Beachco and submit this statement for public comment. Dr. Beachco has been a dedicated and valued member of the Crafton Hills College community. His commitment to academic excellence, student advocacy, and inclusive education has been meaningful and lasting impact on many of us, has had a meaningful and lasting impact on many of us. Over the years, he has gone above and beyond to support students, foster dialogue, and build a classroom environment where everyone feels welcomed and empowered to learn. I was saddened to learn that Dr. Beachco will not be granted tenure for his fifth year. While I understand that these decisions are complex, I hope the Board will take into account the overwhelming student support he has earned through his actions, presence, and dedication on campus. Please consider this message as a reflection of the gratitude and respect many of us hold for Dr. Beachco. I stand in full support of him and all his contributions to the Crafton Hills College community. Thank you for your time and consideration with sincere appreciation. Paulino Nestor de la Cruz, student at Crafton Hills College. Second is by Daramis, my apologies if I mispronounced, Daramis Hernandez. I would like to say that I had the privilege of having Professor Beachco for A and P 101. He was an excellent instructor who always showed enthusiasm in what he taught. He was always supportive and giving his time apart from class time to review any questions about tests and review of course material. He was engaged in lab and always demonstrated professionalism. I truly feel he was a, I truly feel we as a student body are losing a great professor in biology. Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Katrina Berenger.
All right, good evening, Chancellor Rodriguez, Board of Trustees members, and dedicated students of the public. Some of you may know me for the role I serve in my college, but today I'm here primarily as a student concerned for her faculty, college, and education. I, of course, stand here in support of Dr. Alex Beachco. Our faculty dare to stand by our sides and fight for us and beside us in ways unseen and in rooms unheard. Our faculty are more than just teachers. They are mentors. They are mentors and life shapers. Dr. Beachco has dedicated years of service to his college and community, being an esteemed faculty member and beloved professor, actively reforming outdated curriculum and standards, and having an exemplary record of education excellence. For this, he's garnered glowing comments and support from his colleagues and especially his students. He inspires and supports the students who are lucky enough to cross paths with him, makes complex topics accessible, and takes interest in the academic journeys of his students. His student approval, success, and retention rates reflect this commitment to student-focused educational environments. And on a personal note, I'd just like to say that Dr. Alex Beachco is one of the few teachers who looks at his students and sees them as people first and letters in a gradebook second. And to lose a professor like that would be a painful blow to our college. One bad evaluation does not constitute a bad professor, nor do the negative opinions of the few outweigh the voices of the many. Dr. Beachco's students deserve to continue learning from his expertise and having his support. Our institution deserves to maintain its reputation for integrity and excellence, and his young children need their father to be employed. For these reasons, I, as a concerned student advocating for her faculty, her college, and her education, I urge the administration and the Board of Trustees to reconsider and to reevaluate the non-renewal contract for Dr. Alex Beachco. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Alene Cow.
Hello, my name is Alene Cow, and I'm a biology major here at Crafton Hills College. I've come today to speak on behalf of Dr. Alex Beachco, who has been sadly terminated as of the next academic year. Dr. Beachco was my anatomy lab professor last semester, and I think a lot of his students can attest to his character and qualifications as well as his active efforts to promote a positive attitude, a positive equitable and diverse environment. He cares very much for the subjects he teaches and his students' well-being, and Dr. Beachco is always willing to help or answer questions. He does his job very well and is kind and knowledgeable. As far as I know, and that I have seen from both my experience as his student and from watching the Student Senate and Board Trustee meetings, Dr. Beachco has done nothing to deserve termination or be denied tenure. He makes a sincere effort to make a positive impact on Crafton and has no doubt devoted a lot of time into making this institution's biology department improve. I, as well as many others, are extremely sad that it has come to this. I urge you to keep Dr. Beachco's good character in mind and to reconsider your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Allison Yaragui. I know, it was probably a disaster, wasn't it?
Good afternoon, Board of Trustees. My name is Allison Howdige. I'm a student attending Crafton Hills College, and I am here to address the non-reemployment of Dr. Alexander Beachco. The news of this decision was incredibly disappointing and is antithetical to my experience as well as many others as his student. After only taking a single semester-long course with him, he has had a profound impact on me. He has helped me understand the complicated world of postgraduate education and research, giving me valuable insight and advice so that I am well-equipped to pursue a career in biomedical research. Because of him, my future has become clearer, and I understand the steps that I need to take in order to dedicate my life to what I'm passionate about. Even after the course has ended, he is still there for me when I need advice and does his best to assist me however he can. I am incredibly grateful to have been his student, and I believe future Crafton Hills College students of the biological sciences deserve that experience as well. His classes are rigorous and challenging, but he makes success possible for everyone, preparing his students to face the challenges they will inevitably encounter in their academic career. His lectures are highly interactive, asking his students questions that promote critical thinking skills and curiosity. Dr. Beachco makes an effort to inform his students on postgraduate education and future career options, which I have not seen to nearly the same degree. He is incredibly kind and compassionate with an unwavering dedication to the success of his students. It is strikingly clear that he is passionate about what he does and is committed to equity in education. With all of this in mind, it is hard to logically conclude how Dr. Beachco has been denied tenure. It leads me to question the integrity of the evaluations and recommendations that have led to this decision. For if they were truly based on merit, I believe he would have been reelected. I urge the Board to reconsider because Dr. Beachco is an incredibly valuable asset to the college. He has unique capabilities that are difficult to come by but are terribly important for the success of students in the biological sciences. If you decide to go ahead with the decision that has been made, know that you are making a mistake and are doing a disservice to the students of Crafton Hills College. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Ayesha Nash. Alicia, okay. Wasn't sure if that was an L or an I, I'm sorry.
My name is Ayesha Nash. I'm a freshman at San Bernardino Valley College and the co-membership Director of the Black Young Democrats of the Inland Empire. And for some context, I came to San Bernardino Valley College as valedictorian of my high school with political background and a 3.5 GPA, and I applied for an open position at ASG that is still unfilled today along with several other open positions. And I received no reason for denial until an executive board member that was on the executive board at the time said that I was refused because it would look like I would start drama. I was judged off not my qualifications but off my appearance. When I brought this to Dean Ray Carlos, the Director of Student Life, he said he would follow up, but he never did. I was graceful because I didn't want it to be the terms of discrimination, but when I had to fight to be a part of the Student Senate as a regular student to advocate for equality and for there to be rehabilitative services on my campus, and I told this to Diame Rodriguez Martinez, and I said, "One of my legislative priorities would be equality." He said to me, "You guys keep dropping out of school. We're trying to make this a historical black college. You all say there's no space for you, but that's why we gave you Umoja, and honestly, I think Umoja is an excuse for funding." These comments reflect his negative and racist perception of black people. Diame and Nelba are not even full-time students, yet they are pushing the full-time students aside and power-grabbing leadership on my campus. I'm not asking you guys, I am telling you guys that you need to hold these students accountable, and both of them need to be removed off of the Executive Board. If the district does not follow up or address these students or hold them accountable, I will return with every black student on my campus and in my community, because I am a community member, to make our voices heard and to challenge the very stereotype you guys expect us to embody. This is not about just me, but it is about every black student who is on campus, because it is not just Hispanic students on that campus, but it's also black students which fund the school that I go to, and I deserve a position on the Associated Student Government. There does need to be some more diverse representation, and like I said, at the General Assembly, our school looked like a complete joke because there are still open positions that are not fulfilled because of their negative perceptions of people that they do not feel are worthy to be on Associated Student Government. Mind you, these students are in their master's degree program. I am a freshman trying to, you know, trying to advocate for the students on my campus. Thank you.
Thank you. Victoria Van Stee.
Hello, my name is Victoria Van Stee. You probably know me from Crafton Student Government. As I come and give the reports now, I'm in place of Katrina Berenger, but I am here on behalf as just a student, as a student concerned about the faculty issue that we have had already heard from. I'm going to speak first, a comment that I have from a fellow student, and then I'll continue from there. So, community college is sometimes unnecessarily difficult. There are a lot of hard times and better times. During a period of incredibly difficult time, Dr. Beachco was the first person to tell me that things are okay. I told him my prospects. I told him I wasn't sure and I didn't know what to do. He told me he related to what I had going on at the time. He told me it was okay to step back and take a break until I got all of my energy back. Dr. Beachco was the first professor I could trust not to hold it against me at a time when I really needed it. He offered a level of patience I hadn't seen from a professor before. I failed his class, but I left it thankful for a professor who was so caring about hard times and being human. Dr. Beachco is a well-put-together professor who cares a lot about his students. He works closely with his students, and he cares to make his lectures engaging and enjoyable. His structure was clear and very easy to follow along with. If you get lost in his class, it was always incredibly easy to pick back up with him. That is not something you can say about many other professors. Clear and concise scheduling is a treasure from a professor in harder subjects. Dr. Beachco cares a lot about his students. He is a friend and a mentor to those who go to him. Professors like him make harder classes bearable and enjoyable. If I could, I would express just how much of an impact he made on my life in that one semester I took with him. Now, this is one comment from one student, but I have heard from many, many students. I have been, I'm not afraid to say I am the one who said, "Organize this," to have students come speak in support of him. Sitting at the back of the last Board of Trustees meeting, hearing him speak on his Terms of Non-Reelectment really made me realize how we need to be standing up for our faculty members, especially when the Terms of Non-Reelectment seem as unfair as him. I have not come across a single other person other than the Board of Trustees here and the evaluations he has gotten who has said that he is a bad person, has brought up anything other than him being a genuine, kind professor who deserves his job. So I implore you, Board of Trustees, that this decision needs to be considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Seema Chemki? I'm sorry.
Hi, everyone. My name is Seema. I'm a student here, and I work at the Tutoring Center. I tutor subjects in biology, organic chemistry, chemistry, anatomy, and physiology, and writing. So I would like to publicly, sorry, publicly thank the Tutoring Center for being a space and community that recognizes, respects, and encourages their students of every ethnicity and background, including mine, which is Arab-North African heritage. My identity and existence has always been questioned, overlooked, for simply because of how I look like, how I dress, and where I come from. I have never felt as heard, seen, or valued by any educational institution, but that stopped the day that I stepped foot in the Tutoring Center here at Crafton. To be treated like I matter has done so much for my overall well-being as a student and as an employee, which I don't get often, especially, obviously, here in this country. So, thank you to the tutors for being a friend to me, and most importantly, thank you to my bosses, Nick, Karen, and Jordan, for creating and nourishing a space that makes me feel safe, welcome, respected, and heard, not just as a student and a tutor, but also as a human being. You guys are the best bosses ever. Thank you.
Thank you. Chancellor, is there any clarification? We'll move on to Item Four, Approval of Minutes of the March 13th, 2025 Board of Business Meeting. Do we have a motion to approve? Is there a second?
I'll second. Houston?
So we have a motion by Trustee Aguilera with a second by Trustee Houston. Is there any discussion? All right, if there's no discussion, we'll go ahead and cast our electronic votes with Student Trustees voting first, please. All right, yeah, yeah, look around. Excellent, and the motion passes. Move on to Section Five, Recognition and Celebrations of Pause Cards. All right, thank you very much. Congratulations. Move on now to the Action Agenda. Item A, Board Policies for Final Approval.
Before you take a motion, I would like to pull BP 5075 and BP 6610. There was clerical errors.
All right, so do we have a motion to approve the Board Policies for Final Approval with the exclusion of BP 5075 and 6610?
I'll make that motion.
All right, we have a motion by Trustee Houston with a second by Trustee Longville to approve those specified Board Policies for Final Approval. Is there any discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll go ahead and cast votes. Student Trustees first, please. And the motion carries. Item B, Consideration of Approval to Adopt Resolution Number 20250410FP, Mixed Use Development of Site K and Future Development of Sanrio Valley College New Properties. Do we have a motion for approval? So we have a motion by Trustee Longville and a second by Trustee Aguilera to approve and adopt resolution, et cetera, et cetera. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we'll go ahead and take our votes. And the motion carries. Item C, Independent Audit of KVCR TV and FM. So we have a motion. Second?
Second, Houston.
All right, we have a motion by Trustee Bettors and a second by Trustee Houston for, to approve the independent audit of KVCR. Is there any discussion? There's no discussion, go ahead and cast our votes. And the motion carries. Moving on to Section D, Student Trustee Privileges. Somebody cut off my microphone. All right, Student Trustee Privileges. Do we have a motion to approve? All right. All right, we have a motion to approve the Student Trustee Privileges by Student Trustee Nater with a second by Trustee Bettors. Is there any discussion? Absolutely.
So, I know in discussing the Student Trustees, I see a lot of students today, and I think one thing I highly encourage you all is to be active, participate in these kind of programs, because you will, these are where you find a lot of the skills that would make you not only successful but help our community college district. And, you know, I just continue to encourage everyone to really look into them, encourage your friends to be a part of it, because that's how you really become involved and really learn those skills that'll help you in the future.
Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll go ahead and cast votes. And the motion carries. Moving on to Item Seven, the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda is expected to be routine and non-controversial and will be acted upon by the Board at one time without discussion. Any member of the Board, staff member, or citizen may request that an item be removed from this section for discussion. Are there any items to pull from the Consent Agenda? All right, if there are none, you can go ahead. Someone would like to move for approval?
I second.
So we have a motion by Trustee Aguilera and a second by Trustee Nater to approve the Consent Agenda. Is there any discussion? All right, hearing none, please go ahead and cast your votes. There we go. And the motion carries. Moving on now to Item, Section Eight, Reports. The Board Committee and Activity Reports. Trustee Houston, Board Finance Committee.
Sorry, our Board Finance Committee met today here at Crafton, and for our meeting, we had an opportunity to tour the campus and see some of the newest upgrades, including the status of where we are with the Performing Arts Center, which was pretty incredible to see. I remember not that long ago being here when we broke ground on that, so the progress is awesome, and it's going to be such a great place for our students to be able to experience the arts in a different way, not only from behind the scenes as the individuals that are actually producing, directing, lighting, acting, doing all of the things, singing, playing, performing, all of those, but also to consume on the other side by the ability to invite the community in to join us here at Crafton and really see this beautiful campus. So that was really great to see, and of course, the state-of-the-art aspects, the entire team was there. That's from, you know, architect to, I don't even know, all the titles, all of our team, all the people, they were all there. And that's just a testament to the support that the project has. But one of the exciting things about that was learning about the certifications for sustainability. And really, we're in a position to not only receive certifications similar to what we've received in the past, but also certifications that allow us to provide data to other schools, other organizations that are interested in building sustainable buildings like this, to really inform what that could look like for the future. So it really like puts us in, like I consider, a little bit of like a research place where we're providing data for what the future is going to look like in sustainable buildings. So, pretty exciting. I believe the word was platinum lead, which sounds, I don't know, pretty impressive. I know, like, when I, you know, getting ready to board a flight, I'm usually like the aluminum foil level, so I'm super excited about the platinum-level certification. From there, we got to go to the anthropology lab and really see some contextual learning going on through a really like a problem-based, project-based activity, as I imagine it's a series of activities that happen that is sort of based around the television series Bones, which I had not heard of, but it's sort of like using this forensic science and anthropology combined to identify and solve crimes. So, super contextual, super exciting. The students that we talked to were super, like, I kept, I've said super like four times, but really engaged, and it was neat to see. What one of the highlights for me as I was kind of walking through was I had an opportunity to just, in seriously, like a 30-second exchange, speak to the lab assistant, Thomas, and he was, you know, bragging about all of the things and the kits and all of that that they were doing. And I asked him how long he'd been here at Crafton. He said about a year and a half, and I'm like, "Well, what brought you here?" Because I'm always interested in, you know, what brings people to our campuses. And he was a student, so he's a homegrown, which was pretty exciting, too. Homegrown, out of the programs here, you know, graduated here, transferred to UCR, and then has now come back, and he's like, "I'm never leaving." So that's one of the things that just sort of speaks to the culture of the district and the culture that we're creating, not only through the campus and the facility that we see, but what we see today, our students that are engaged, our faculty that's engaged, and really having all of that support. So I know I all- So I know I always go long-winded, but that was really the focus today for our Board Finance Committee meeting, really contextual for us as well. We get to see most of the time lots of super exciting numbers on paper, but we got to actually see it actualized and operationalized today through the tour. So with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, and I would actually just second everything that trustee Houston said. It was a great tour, and I really appreciate everyone taking the time to do that. And I also want to thank Crafton Hills College for hosting this meeting today, which I failed to do thus far. So thank you, Dr. Haran, and everyone here at Crafton. We really appreciate that. We have no report this month for the Board Legislative Committee. The Board Policy and Procedures Ad Hoc Committee met two weeks ago. We had a very brief meeting with just one item that is now moving through the chain. We'll move on now to the Board of Governors Report, which there is not a report this month, and we'll turn it back. We're going to put up three-minute timer for trustee Houston on the Joint Powers Authority. No, I'm kidding. I'm absolutely kidding.
No report. We meet next week. Lucky you. We are planning a pushout, which I talked about last, last time, but we haven't had a meeting, so.
Thank you. Chancellor?
Thank you. First of all, also, I'd like to thank Dr. Haran and his team for hosting us today and providing that amazing tour. And I got the reference to Bones. That is a fantastic series and funny.
Never heard of it.
You're gonna have to watch it. Also, just want to say big congratulations, and I may be stealing some of Dr. Haran's comments, but I'm sure he will add more to it. Dr. Gio Sosa, who was selected to lead the statewide vision-aligned reporting initiative, a huge, huge deal for the state of California and aligning goals throughout the state. So big congratulations to him. Also, kudos to Crafton Hills College for their transfer success. Crafton is numbered, was voted number one in all of Southern California for its admit rate to the UC system from fall '23 and '24, so congratulations. Super exciting, super exciting. For the remainder of my report, I'd like to yield my time to Associate Vice Chancellor Rodriguez to talk about some of the important things going on in the legislative community. Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Chancellor. Good afternoon, Board and Crafton. Congratulations again to Crafton on their number-one placement. Happy to give a report on legislation. As you all know, the Board approved their legislative priorities in December so that we're ready for the new year, January 2025, so that we can advocate for students, and we've been doing that since then. The three main areas of advocacy have been centered around college affordability, workforce development, community prosperity. So what does that mean? We've been working with the Governor's Office recently to include our district in the Career Education Master Plan. This is a new plan that the state has that basically aligns all the services, schools, K-12, higher education, social services, to make sure that we're serving adult learners in a very efficient way, in a more coordinated way. And so that plan was released about two weeks ago, and something that all students should be very proud of is that our college was mentioned in that statewide plan. So if you were to go to careereducationmasterplan.ca.gov, you can see the plan for yourself. But basically, the reason why we were mentioned in that plan was because of our good work in aligning our services with CalFresh, meaning that we are now using FAFSA data that will allow students to access CalFresh food assistance in a more simplified way rather than creating one more, one more application. We're using the FAFSA to make sure that students can get food assistance if they need it and if they qualify. So that's something that the state saw as an area, as a bright spot for this region, but something like a model that could also be replicated across the state. So kudos to the Board for approving that MOU with San Bernardino County and CalFresh. The other issue that we've been tracking has been at the federal level. I think several of you who are engaged in advocacy are paying attention to the news, and sometimes you want to look away, but then sometimes you have to pay attention. We will be in Washington DC at the end of the month, and we will be there with a delegation of students from both Valley and Crafton. Our chancellor will also be there. Thank you, Dr. Houston, for also being there and advocating, excuse me, and advocating. What we're going to be talking about is financial aid. We're going to be talking about workforce development, protecting federal funds at the federal level. Excuse me. I have a cough, so my voice is coming in and out. The one thing that I would want to highlight is that our chancellor was selected to represent the California voice in a panel with other higher education leaders. And she's going to be talking about how our campus is serving our documented students. As you know, we follow guidelines from California, from the Attorney General, to make sure that students are safe on campus. So Chancellor Rodriguez will be talking a little bit about that. So with that, I will keep it at three minutes, and I will conclude my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we will move on to representative groups, and first up is the Crafton Hills College Academic Senate.
Good evening, members of the Board. I can't remember all the titles, so I'll just say hello to all of you at once. I am Meredith McLaren. I am the Academic Senate President for just a little bit longer, anyway. But I just wanted to say I don't have a long report. I don't have a lot to report. Basically, just kind of a couple of updates, some things that are coming up as we work on finishing out our year. Basically, next week, we are going to be having a student and faculty fun event on campus. Just going to do lunch. We're going to have some food trucks come. The Pride Club is going to be participating with the Senate, as well as the Music Club, so we're going to have music. Professional Development is going to bring games, have opportunities to write little thank you notes to both students and the faculty, so it should be a really fun event. And if you're really hungry and you want to come for lunch, you can come, too. So it's on Wednesday, from 11 to 1:00. And so another just kind of highlight, we approved three faculty for advancement in rank to professor. And so we have actually, I believe, one more as well. So we are, these are professors who have been here for seven years and now can move from, I think it's associate, to full professor. Other things, just, just kind of a little update, there was, we got, I got some feedback from the faculty member on the P-PAC Committee about the APs and PPs that are on the agenda tonight. I guess there was, it didn't quite follow the process as they were thinking it would. And so there's, I guess the document that you're going to see does not contain the feedback from the Senate's. I believe both Senate's had some feedback. So when it comes back again, just be aware that the changes probably will be extensive when you see this for the second response, or a second read, simply because they did have a lot of feedback that they would like to have included in the, a couple of the policies, not all of them, just a few. So, anyway. Another good thing we are doing currently are voting for the full-time and part-time, as well as Classified Professional of the Year. Every year, the faculty vote and honor our hard-working colleagues with that distinguished award. Gets their little name on a plaque and everything, so. Anyway, so that's always a fun thing. And then, basically, right now, we're just working on establishing the Senate for the next two years. The Senate is done, and then we'll have an election for the next two years. It's probably not surprising, most of them are staying on and continuing, but the Senate will also have a new president. So I am done. My term is finished, and we will have a new president and VP starting in fall. So you will not see me up here again. I know you're sad, but it's okay. Anyway, and that's all, that's all I have for my report.
Thank you, Professor McLaren. Crafton Hills College Classified Senate.
Hello, everyone. It's good to see you. It's been a while since I've actually been able to attend. It's been kind of a busy year. But I am Karen Peterson, President of the CHC Classified Senate. For now, we're also going through elections. We'll see what happens. You know, it's a hotly contested role, so. But we do have some exciting things that have been happening this year. Karen Campus is finally coming back to Crafton. This is something that's been in the works for a while, and it's, we're getting there. And so I would really like to thank my Vice President, Veronica Arrowood, as well as Dean Willie Blackman, and Lilly Medina, and Vice President of Student Services, Delmi Spencer, for helping make that happen. I, let's see, recently participated in a meeting with Region Nine, Classified Professionals from across Region Nine as part of a Committee for Guided Pathways, where we met to talk about how we can support our students and one another through a very tumultuous time. And it was a, it was a great conversation. There was a lot, a lot of good that came from that conversation. And it's just really been great for John Feist from Valley College and myself to participate in that and to be able to, to connect with other classified professionals across Riverside Community College, Barstow, Victor Valley. A lot of people have been participating in that. And then lastly, I would just like to mention a couple of things. First of all, this past Tuesday, April 8th, was National Library Workers Appreciation Day. So I would like to thank our library staff, who work very hard for our students. And then, of course, coming up, April 23rd, is Administrative Professionals Day, so I'd like to thank all of our administrative professionals, and I'd like to encourage all of you to thank your administrative professionals. And that is my report.
Thank you very much. Crafton Hills College Associated Students.
Hello. I am Victoria Vance-Dy from the Crafton Hills College Student Senate. So we did a lot of things in the last month, most notably having to do with General Assembly. So we recently returned from the 2025 SSC General Assembly Conference, in which nine students from the Senate, including our two advisors, were able to attend. The conference went from Thursday, April 3rd, to Sunday, April 6th, and it included a variety of workshops and networking opportunities. The students who attended General Assembly were given the opportunity to argue in favor of or against some resolutions that were presented as well. The Vice President and SSC Delegate Berenger and External Affairs Director Vance-Dy got the chance to debate several different resolutions in front of those attending the conference, which, there was a lot. There was over 1,000 people there, so. The SSC, with the work of all the community colleges that attended, including the Crafton Hills College Student Senate, we were able to pass a record-breaking 87 resolutions over the course of Saturday and Sunday. Many of the resolutions aimed to directly address various issues and barriers that students may face within community colleges across the state. Student parents, adult learners, veterans, disabled students, Native American students, African-American students, and more, were targeted by these resolutions with the goal of helping them in one way or another. Vice President and SSC Delegate Berenger had two proposed resolutions, that being the Language Initiative for Future Talent and Advocacy for the Deaf, Hard, and Hearing Committee, which passed with absolutely no debate whatsoever. And then this month, as far as on Crafton activities go, we're working with the Crafton Pride Club to host several different events themed around LGBTQ+ related topics. Wednesday, April 2nd, from 12 to 2:00 PM, was the Gay Pro Opener, in which students and faculty were able to enjoy a silent disco. Events for the rest of the month include a workshop on changing your name or gender marker, a resource tabling, and a faculty-sponsored lunch, which was mentioned earlier, a book review and signing with Dr. John Paul Higgins, and then a lavender luncheon to close the month off. All the events are free to the students and faculty at Crafton, and we hope everyone enjoys the rest of the events for this month. Thank you.
Thank you. San Bernardino Valley College Academic Senate. No report? San Bernardino Valley College Classified Senate? No report? How about San Bernardino Valley College Associated Students? No report? CSEA? No report? CTA?
Good evening, everybody. I'm Nick Riker. I'm the Faculty Tutoring Coordinator here at Crafton Hills College, but I'm also the VP of the CTA, so nice talking to you all for the first time. I have a really quick report for you. We had a general membership meeting at about a close, a few weeks ago. It was at Escape Brewery. We decided to try to combine our socializing with our general membership meetings, and it was a great turnout. I think faculty were very happy with it. We're excited that we've almost completely had our bylaws approved by the CTA. I know that sounds boring, but I don't think they've been updated for about 12 years, so we're finally in the modern era. So faculty are happy with that, and we have an upcoming vote on the TA of our wages that we negotiated. We continue to add members, and I think working with the district and administrators more as partners and building these relationships, strengthening relationships, has really helped with that. And I'd like to publicly thank our negotiations team, as well as the district's negotiation team. I have been on the negotiation team before, and I know it is a lot of work, more work than most people realize when it comes to contract negotiations. So thank you, and that's it for my report.
Thank you. Police Officers Association. No report? Okay, we'll move on to staff reports. San Bernardino Valley College President, Dr. Contreras.
Thank you, trustee Gonzalez. In addition to my written report, I have a number of updates. Before I do, I just want to thank Dr. Kevin Haran and Crafton Hills College for hosting us today. Also want to wish everybody a happy Arab-American Heritage Month. April is that celebration month. And also want to just share a lot about the engagement at our college campus right now. Right now, our aeronautics program is in Atlanta, Georgia, competing in an aero maintenance competition. Instructor Francisco Gonzalez, want to thank him and all the students who are there representing our college, and Dr. Joanna Oxendine, who was able to acquire a Federal Aviation Grant and help our college send students there. We have people at the Apahi Conference, the Asian-Pacific Americans in Higher Education Conference, Batani Tsaka, Ula Mataveo, our students, our club from the Pacifica Student Club, who made me dance during the opening day this spring. I forgive them for that. Our honors conference, last night at UC Riverside, a number of faculty and students were presenting outstanding. The keynote speaker was an alum of San Bernardino Valley College, a very proud moment for us. On Tuesday, we hosted the Adult Education Consortium. Want to thank Emma Diaz and Ayana Spivey, our coordinator of our DEEP program, for leading those efforts. I also want to acknowledge our Vice President of Administrative Services, Keith Bacon, for providing us with opportunities to add parking. We opened up additional parking this week at our college. Today, we hosted Senior Day. We had about 700 students at San Bernardino Valley College, bringing the campus to life with food and sounds. Just an exciting time. Want to thank our Vice President of Student Services, Yvonne Gutierrez-Sandoval, and the entire Student Services team for leading those efforts. I also want to share that enrollment is up. Compared to same day last year, summer is up 34% and fall is up 29%. That means our priority Reds groups are really getting to enroll and starting to enroll very aggressively. On Friday, we'll be meeting with Cal State San Bernardino to foster that collaboration. We want to be their number-one feeder school. We're also advancing our Hispanic-serving institutions and Black-serving institution efforts with them. And Monday is our Dreamers Resource Center 10-year anniversary, and for all of you, we are the first Dreamers Resource Center in the state of California. And finally, I just want to close sending love and healing to our Vice President of Student Services, Yvonne. Today, we're the funeral services for her mother, and I want to thank the district and the college for really showing her love and support.
Thank you. Crafton Hills College President, Dr. Haran.
Yes, Chancellor Rodriguez did steal some of my reports, but that's okay. We can always celebrate. Dr. Gio Sosa, some more for being selected in that role for the statewide vision-aligned reporting project. I also want to congratulate Dr. Delmi Spencer. She has been selected for the Region Nine to represent all Chief Student Services officers. It's her time to attend some more meetings up in Sacramento. I also want to thank the entire team today for putting together the tour. It was a real big joint effort from the district facilities team and also the Crafton Facility Teams and Mike Strong, who unfortunately is out sick today, for highlighting that. And really to thank Cheryl Di Bartolo, our professor of anthropology, and Tom Ramirez, who's the lab tech in anthropology, for showing us this really leading and creative forensic anthropology exercise that Professor Di Bartolo created herself. Very fascinating, that which I'm told is going to be leading to its own independent class. So we're very excited about being able to highlight that. I also want to thank Dr. Arnalas and Angel Rodriguez and Gil Contreras for participating in the MOU signing with the Inland Education Health Plan. This is an amazing opportunity for our students to have more access to CalFresh and Medi-Cal services, and I'm very grateful for everyone's efforts in pulling that together. We had a wonderful kickoff to our Gay Pro Month of activities. Thank you, trustee Gonzalez, for coming and giving a welcome, and to Professor Rick Hogreef for sharing his experiences with our students and our community to help inspire others. We have a couple events coming up as well. Senior Day is tomorrow for us. It's very Saved by the Bell theme, if you want to come by and get some 90s wear. And then tomorrow, Crafton is helping to support the Redlands Bike Classic and the race tomorrow. The support stations will be held on Crafton's campus. So there'll be a couple little road closures in the morning, but it shouldn't impact any of our operations. That's my report.
Thank you. Executive Vice Chancellor? Vice Chancellor of Human Resources and Police Services?
No report.
Vice Chancellor of Educational and Student Support Services?
No report.
All right, are there any questions or? All right. Are there any questions or discussion of information items in Section 9? All right. At this time, we will enter a closed session to discuss confidential matters that are generally stated on the agenda. Let's see. Do we have any public comments on closed session items?
No, sir.
All right. The time is now 4:49, and the board will convene to close session. Thank you very much, everybody.
Reconvening public meeting, the time is 5:36. There was no action taken in closed session, so closed session conclude at 5:33. If there's no objections, we are going to adjourn. Thank you, thank you everybody.